Okay, thank you. All right, we'll call the order at six oh four. And we'll start with any agenda adjustments? I don't have any.
The administration doesn't have any either.
Okay, very good. Any nominations or resignations or other correspondence?
None this evening.
Beautiful. All right, we're moving on to approval amendments. This is the August twenty-third meeting. Following amendments were offered. Page four, line eight, replace note with not. Page six, line twenty-two, insert four before the lunchroom. Page eleven, line fifteen, correct the spelling of opinion. So I will make a motion to accept as amended.
I'll second that.
Very good. All in favor? Three to zero, or carries three to zero. And then, non-public on August twenty-third, I will make a motion to accept as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Three to zero, very good. And we'll turn it over to you, Mike. Where's Mike at? There he is.
Okay. That was quick. We're working on pulling up.
Okay, so I will... So do you want to introduce yourself and who you support first? That would be awesome, just to level set anyone on the public.
Sure. Mike Davy with Energy Efficient Investments. And we are a Merrimack, New Hampshire-based energy efficiency company. And we've been working with this district, Brookline, since two thousand and one. And in two thousand and two, we actually completed a project that included the room that we're sitting in now. This used to be storage space, or this used to be a classroom and storage, and we converted it into the library. We freed up, added ADA access to the lower floor with a handicap lift, and then did some other renovations to add additional space to this building. And tonight, we're working on pulling up the PowerPoint. We have a presentation that was originally done in two thousand and twenty-one. Because we, I was told there are several new board members, we're going to spend a little more time than just quickly breezing through it. But we updated the numbers at the end of the presentation. Because at a high level, although we did do a lot with the project that was completed in two thousand and twenty-two where we're sitting now, at both buildings, there's a lot of needs coming up. And so the way to deal with, when you have two large buildings like CSDA and RMMS, you can either keep chipping away at them or pick a time to do a very larger project. One of our neighboring districts in Amherst, which we also just started working with, have a lot of buildings like South Heagan and the middle school that haven't done a lot of projects. And they're, both their elementaries are also kind of needing a lot of work. So that district is looking, last year, they brought, they brought to their voters a ninety-six million dollar bond that failed. And now they're talking about what size bond to bring back next year. But even that ninety-six million dollar bond was only going to deal with their elementaries and not South Heagan and the middle school. And so in, in, in Brookline, historically, the district, the school board, at least since I've been working with them, have been trying the chip-away approach and every year or two, try and do a roof, do some siding, do some boilers. And so tonight, when we get this PowerPoint, which is beautiful, I promise, up and running, we will, we will go through it. In fact, I can, because we have a small crowd here and everybody has the hard copy. Everybody except for me. Could some, would somebody mind giving me hard copy? I can roll through it because Kelly's having technical difficulties on her computer. So I'll start with hard copy until IT comes up. So first, I'm just going to roll through. First slide just says who we are, which I already talked about. Second one shows our office locations. Three, the next one is our project success stories. We've worked with Portsmouth, Somersworth, Shaker, Keene, Manchester, and Hollis Brookline. One other project we did recently was adding dehumidification to the upper floors of the high school at Hollis Brookline. And we've, we've gotten some very positive feedback about improved air quality and comfort, especially during that first week of school when it was in the nineties outside. In two thousand and twenty-one, we were asked to look at three things. Energy efficiency, the need for additional educational and storage space, any ADA upgrades, and then coordinate those two items in a comprehensive plan. I have that at the end. I will say, back when we first started meeting in two thousand and twenty-one, there was a lot of talk about development in town and increased student load. I don't know where that stands in two thousand and twenty-three, but that was a concern that was constantly brought up is, hey, we think there could be more kids coming and, and we're pretty, the classrooms are pretty full, the spaces are fully utilized, there's not a lot of extra space. So if, if more development comes, there's definitely a lack of space in the district. The next slide talks about energy usage. RMS uses forty-two percent more energy than a similarly-sized school in Manchester. And you might ask why? Most Manchester schools have a single boiler room. And here, we have, I think, four boiler rooms or three? Three boiler rooms, each with two. And so there's, every time you have a chimney, you have wasted energy because twenty percent of all the propane or oil that goes through it gets exhausted out. And you have a bit of an older HVAC control system and ventilation system. And most of the building is still fluorescent light. So there's still a huge amount of energy to improve in this building. And I did note, number four, LED lighting would reduce your energy bill by twenty thousand dollars a year. In two thousand and twenty-two, which is the next slide, we eliminated a secondary stair tower that was not required by code. That became usable space downstairs. It became a little bit of a check-in area. And upstairs, an additional conference room was created in that space. We did that because, in general, it's about half the cost to better utilize interior space than to build out and do additions. So with, for somewhere around a million dollars, we were able to create two additional spaces to utilize and refurbish this entire downstairs area and make the building ADA accessible. The next slide just shows the elevator pit that went in to allow for the new elevator. I didn't take a lot of finished pictures to show you because I knew we were going to be in this space. The next slide just talks about RMMS again. With the three boiler rooms, the boilers that are here are what I would call residential or like commercial. So they're not, they're not the high-efficiency boilers that we, that we put in in Manchester now in all their schools. And I think we're considering for the middle school this year. So they're standard efficiency. The pipes aren't very well insulated or insulated at all in this picture. The next slide is just sort of a building layout to give you sort of the Google Earth view of it. And then, moving on to the final slide is a, the floor plan that was pre-doing our project on the lower level that showed the two stair towers, et cetera. And the next slide shows some of the ideas that we had talked about, I believe including an addition for potential extra classroom. Is that on here? No, that's not here yet, sorry. That's the, that's the very next slide. One more down, sorry. The colored, the colored one. So one of the ideas that we had kicked around, and again, I don't think anyone's proposing this for this year, is, hey, if we wanted to add additional classroom spaces, what would that look like? And that floor, the colored floor plan shows additional classrooms that could have been put in. We also talked about, on the last time we met with the building committee, if we go one more slide, if we wanted, right now, if I remember correctly, we have a, the cafeteria and the gym is, is one space, is that correct? And so we talked about, it would be perfect world. It would be nice to have an additional gym space with a stage that was separated from the cafeteria and refurbish and do a small addition for the kitchen. These were all sort of ideas that we kicked around in the high-level purview of things that could be done with this building. After looking at all these and the price tags, in two thousand and twenty-one, the board decided to just focus on the ADA and, and focus on this library area. But these are all projects, historically, that had been at least discussed by the board and reviewed during the process. Could we add a gym? Could we add additional classrooms? And where would that go? And then we provided some pricing with those. The next slide is a, is a breakdown of, at the time, and this is two thousand and twenty-one, I haven't updated this, of what your classrooms were used. And then, if we had done these additions, what would have been proposed. And that is it for RMMS. CSDA is, is a newer building. It also has some space usage. So one of the things that we talked about at CSDA, when you walk through that building, at least from an outsider coming in, and you go to the cafeteria, it's kind of like, where's the rest of the cafeteria? Because it feels like it was undersized from day one and still, still feels that way. I'm sure it does during lunch. Then there was a little bit, there's, I think, modular classrooms that you have to, that at least in two thousand and twenty-one were still in use. So you had to access some modular classrooms. And so one of the things that we had talked about when we met with CSDA in two thousand and twenty-one is it would be nice to expand the cafeteria and add two additional classrooms. So those were some projects we had talked about. Additionally, CSDA boilers are, are twenty-two years old, if I remember correctly.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. And they are, the estimated life of those is twenty to twenty-five. So we're three years past the low end. And they are, oil, and oil is expensive, and they're eighty-two percent efficient. And if we went to propane, we could be at ninety-five percent efficient. So that's one project that I thought is worthy of consideration because there's energy savings and it's a project that is nearing end of life. The next slide is your beautiful HVAC controls system that runs on a two thousand and three Windows machine. And upgrading the HVAC controls is something we did propose as part of the two thousand and twenty-one project, but it got cut out, I think. The other thing is, that system has, most of the school has what's called classroom unit ventilators, which are the noisy boxes on the outside walls. They do have some life left in them, meaning they're not going to, they, they probably have ten more years of life in them. But they're noisy, they don't have the recommended filtration, the recommended energy performance, or the dehumidification that, for example, we put into the high school. So in a perfect world, someday, when these things are ready to be replaced, you, you, in my, in my world, you wouldn't replace them in kind. You'd put in a ducted system like we have at the high school and, and dehumidification. But again, that, that's going to cost a lot of money because you don't have ductwork. So it means taking down the ceilings, putting ductwork in. In Manchester, they made a decision in two thousand and eight, no more unit ventilators. So across the district, all twenty-two schools in their district, they have no more unit ventilators. They bit the bullet and ducked it all their schools. And now they have much better buildings because of that. Did they bit the bullet, man?
Nope.
And I guess I'm being recorded. The, and I also thought that CSDA had some good areas with a lot of sun that could get solar, so that was another, another project. This was some of the addition projects that we had talked about on the next slide, which was a potential six thousand square foot addition that would add two classrooms and get rid of the modulators potentially, so you could bring them in, fully into the envelope. The next slide shows a small nine hundred, and it's the same addition up top, but there's a triangular addition for a cafeteria or kitchen extension to, to create more space there. And that could have been a, sort of a two-level addition that would create storage down below. So that was another project that we had talked about. And my understanding is we're not the first ones to have talked about that. That, that gets kicked around pretty frequently, that more storage and more cafeteria space. CSDA classroom sizes, and again, this data is two thousand and twenty-one, so if this has changed since then, we, I did not update that. One, one other thing, next slide, we are working with the Brookline, Brookline Fire Department. Right now, we doing solar projects on their roof. And we're currently, it's been approved by the town. What's, what's happened, so up until two thousand and twenty-one, or two thousand and twenty-two even, I would say, my opinion on solar for New Hampshire municipalities was, it's kind of nice. The typical payback I saw was like sixteen to eighteen years. It paid for itself, but the panels last like twenty to twenty-five. So if you were going to stay in the building for twenty years, you'd get a little benefit for a couple of years, maybe five max. And, and typically, they're financed with long-term leases. So I've always thought they were fine. Something has totally transformed the solar industry for municipalities and schools, where now, with the Inflation Reduction Act, which was kind of poorly named, but in the Inflation Reduction Act was a provision that, that allowed school districts to get a direct tax payment of thirty percent for solar projects of the entire cost, if you install solar on your roof. If you put in all American-made equipment and pay the Davis Bacon higher wage rates, they'll pay forty percent of the project. What that did is it took these projects, which were generically eighteen-year payback, seventeen, now they're like a nine, eight to nine-year payback. And we're talking with Timberland Regional about doing a fairly major solar project on all their roofs and financing it for twenty years. And so it'll be revenue positive each year. So we're going to save more in energy each year than the annual lease payment. So it's something that, you know, it's worth thinking about. And that's why your fire station is doing that.
So can you expand, because the thirty percent is, that's for homes too. I've been looking into it quite a bit. But the forty-five percent, is that what you said?
Forty.
Forty percent, if we were to, can you expand? If we bought American only, is there a certain benefit to go to then?
Yeah, so, so it would be part of, we'd have to build it into the cost if we did that. Your costs would go up, but then your rebate gets up as, as a percentage of it. And the reason I say inflation and dust, and it's a poorly named bill is because it's created a huge demand for American-made solar. Because everyone is trying to get that forty percent. So it's, it's not reducing inflation, it's increasing inflation on solar. What, we could run the numbers both way with the forty or thirty. But up until, that thirty percent tax credit has been around for homeowners for a while. What this bill did is they, which, and schools don't pay taxes, so you couldn't get it. What they did is they said, the IRS will give you a direct payment for thirty percent of your cost.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
So I'd be interested, though, in seeing the numbers both ways because, while thirty to forty percent sounds great, at the forty percent, you're paying a higher labor rate.
Definitely.
So it's not really forty percent then, because it's going to be that different. So I'd be interested to see what that actual, what those actual numbers are.
Yeah, and when we did, so, and then, the next sheet is where all the, all the numbers are. It looks like it's hard to read there, so I'm glad I printed it out. So we could, I'm trying to be kind of quick with this, but for, for RMMS, we did LED, we looked at LED lighting. DDC, which is, is those, getting rid of those old computers, putting in new controls. Item number three is ducted units with dehumidification, which is what we did over at the high school. Number four is, in perfect world at RMMS, I'd have one central boiler plant with, with, with two boilers total instead of the six that you have now. But that would require piping through the building and, and putting in a propane system. I had a solar-mounted roof system, which is a little bit of a placeholder, but basically, a thirty thousand dollar system could give you a hundred and twenty thousand dollar one-time payment, and you'll save twenty-two thousand dollars a year in energy savings.
A three hundred thousand dollar system.
Three hundred thousand, did I miss?
Yeah, thirty.
It was an amazing savings.
Oh, okay. Yes.
That would have been a yes.
Then, I upgraded, number six is a five-classroom addition. Number seven is a cafeteria and, and kitchen project. Number eight is all new ceilings throughout the upper level. And number nine is adding fire alarm and sprinklers. And this, this is to show eleven million in potential projects here. It's not to say that all this has to be done this year or next, but this is meant to be kind of a roadmap that it's like, help you chip away at things or pick a time when you could bring it all forward, or whichever ones you wanted to.
Can I ask a quick question? Because when we were going through the RMMS stuff, you, you did mention that the boilers are at end of life, but you didn't give us the...
That's CSDA, they're at end of life. Here, they're...
There was a whole bunch, different times.
Yeah, but on one of these slides, it said it, that you were, because that caught my eye. Oh, no, the ventilation system is nearing end of life.
Yes.
So nearing, what does that really mean? Like...
Nearing, so...
Are we five years away? Are we three years away?
So ventilation equipment is interesting because they'll tell you it's twenty years, it's twenty years end of life. It's similar to if you said a truck, an F-150 has a ten-year end of life. You can keep it running for thirty years. You're just going to keep putting more and more and more money into it. And the, I don't recall all the units at RMMS, but I want, I want to say, they're, they tend to be twenty to thirty years old already.
Already, okay.
Yep, and, and one thing that's nice about ventilation equipment is, this number, although it's a, a big number, in general, there's, there's probably eight to ten of these units throughout, throughout the building. And so like, what we did at the high school is, we did a fairly large project. It was over a million dollars, but we targeted the worst units. And so this number is the entire school. This can, this ventilation number for RMMS, number three, that can be broken down, if you essentially divide it by eight or ten, because I don't remember the exact quantity of units, but I could get that for you. That's probably what it would be. And so, so it's really, although it's a two-point-seven, it's really ten ti, ten, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar units. It's not, it's not, doesn't have to be all done as a project.
I would genuinely be interested, though, on how many we actually have, how old each of them are, and then the individual cost to replace them because that might be something we need to chip away at. So I'd like that information if possible.
Unlike, one thing that's different about here is, for the most part, most of these units are already ducted, unlike CSDA, which has no ductwork.
Right.
So, so here, these are easier projects. The one thing, here, there's a lot of units spread along your landscape, kind of, I don't love the location of a lot of your units. So part of the project would be, you know, some of your units are blocking future additions. And they're, they're kind of hidden around. But if you walk around the building, you see quite a lot of ground-mounted units. Like, we're looking at, at CSDA, we looked at one that's also not in a great place and, and how to put that in a better place. So some of these is not always just replacing, it's maybe relocating. I think, if I remember correctly, and I go through a lot of schools and I did this survey three years ago. But I think RMMS has a mezzanine next to the gym where you could put a bunch of units. Does that sound right? Yes. Okay, so, so we thought about taking some of those and putting them up there. There's a lot of unused space rather than having them scattered around the outside of the building. That was the idea at the time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you talk a little bit about boilers and boiler systems? And like, air conditioning system, like HVAC? I don't know if that's out of the scope, you know, what are they called? Heat pumps, things like that, just, you know, I'm just a little... Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little curious as to why schools don't have air conditioning, things like, things like that.
Okay, so I've been, I've been doing this in New Hampshire for, I don't know, it feels like forever, but I think I started in two thousand and five. If I had come to this, the Brookline School Board in two thousand and five and said, I want to put air conditioning or dehumidification into this school, they would have thrown stones at me. In two thousand and five, no one did that in New Hampshire. Now, no one builds a school without it. So we've, we've become a softer state.
I think there's something called climate change.
Yes, yes, that's true.
I do believe in science.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So right now, for the most part, there's almost no air conditioning or cooling in this building, with the exception of the office and maybe some select spots here and there where we have temporary stuff. So my option three here is when we replace these units, to do dehumidification. Which, what, the difference between dehumidification and full AC? Full AC is what I put in office buildings. And you have pinpoint control of every, every office, in a perfect world, has their own thermostat and you can, you design it for being dressed, you know, in a shirt and tie and being able to be comfortable on the Fourth of July in an office space. What, what I propose in number three is dehumidification, which is what we do in most of the schools. It has smaller ductwork. It makes it extremely comfortable on September first, when it's eighty-five out, but it doesn't have pinpoint control. And this is, by the way, the high school, this is what we put in. I did not resize all the ductwork for full AC in the high school. We just put in dehumidification. And it's, in my opinion, very comfortable on those days. But, and so that's what we've, we've proposed here going forward when the time comes.
Right. What size ductwork do we have here? And if we don't have, if we don't have ductwork at CSDA, it wouldn't be, would it be non-issue to put in full-size ductwork? So what size ductwork do we have here?
So here, you have ventilation-sized ductwork. Because that's what would have been put in.
So then we could, you know, we could do full AC here if we wanted to?
You could do dehumidification here, which is what you did at the high school. So, and I'll just explain the difference. When, when the high school was built, when this school was built, you would bring in four hundred CFM of air, which is cubic feet per minute. For, that was the ventilation rate for an average classroom in New Hampshire. If an engineer was designing full AC to be seventy degrees on a hundred-degree day, you would double that. So that means all your duct, if you were to tell me, I want full, full AC at, at RMMS, and I got to separate those two projects. We'd have to rip out every piece of ductwork in this building. That number would go from two-point-seven to probably three-point-five to six, to three-point-five to four million. And you'd get a very negligible benefit from this, this dehumidification because you're just not here enough in mid-July trying to cool the whole school when you really need it. So that, and then, all of these units right now, that you have now, are fed, they, they do two, they do two things. Ventilation and they provide some of the heating. Not all of the heating, because you have baseboard heat on your outside. All of the heating in this building is connected to one of your three boiler plants. So these ten, ten, I said it's eight to ten because I don't remember. Air handlers that are spread around your building all have a hot water coil in them that takes the oil, heats it up in the boiler plant, sends it, and it heats the air coming into the building during the winter months. So when I was thinking about this building and the, in running these numbers, I was saying, at some point, and, and by the way, it's not in the immediate future that you need to do this boiler project. This could be ten years out. Because, right, wrong, or indifferent, you've replaced many of these older, smaller boilers throughout the years. So you have some boilers that are four years old, five years old. There's no immediate need for this boiler project. But when, when the time comes, the way, the way I've budgeted this is to say, new propane boilers, new units with dehumidification, and hot water coils. Another, you asked the question, so we could spend a whole day on it, and Kelly's seen me talk for a whole day about this with the Hollis Energy Committee. There's another technology altogether, which would get, say, let's get off of fossil fuels. Let's not design our ventilation and our boilers in our buildings for propane-supplied heating. Let's do air-source heat pumps, or, which air-source heat pumps are like what we call throughout, throughout the, we call them mini-splits, people put them in their house. You can use those to space, to do the space heating and cooling in schools. You, the technology's starting to get where you can do the ventilation, heating and cooling with air-source heat pumps. But currently, it only works on the ventilation side down to ten degrees that we're comfortable with. So if you start getting below ten degrees with today's technology, I'm not comfortable that you could heat the school, so you would still need propane in some way. Now, ten years down the line, is it possible you could run the whole building with air-source heat pumps? I think so. I think that's where the industry's going, but I wouldn't do it today. Litchfield tried to do it today, and they are regretting it. The, lastly... The, uh, lastly, um, the geothermal, which as we talked about, which Hollis Energy Committee is very interested in and which we're working on numbers for it, is, is exponentially higher than any of these numbers. So like if you were to do all these projects today, which, which I'm not saying that you have to, it would, to do full, all-new boiler plant and all-new, every new ventilation unit, it looks like it's like 3.5 million. If you were to do all geothermal, you're probably in the seven to eight to maybe more million dollars. So it's, it's orders of magnitude higher. So, um, but the reason I'm glad that you asked that question is because as we start planning these replacements, and there's two approaches, right? On this ventilation number, in a, I'd say within 10 years, you want to do all 10 of these units. You could either bring this project forward at some point in the next 10 years as one project, or again, you could do 270 a year and do one a year, and that's fine too. If you do the one-a-year approach, we really got to decide where you want to be in 10 years, because you don't, if you really want to get away from propane, then we need to start thinking about air-source heat pump type units versus with some, so anyway. Even though it's, because, anyway, so that's, it's a good question. And it's just worth thinking about, like, when do we want to do, when do you want to do this and how? And I will get that list of units and I have it literally on my computer. I just didn't present it to this. Can I jump to CSDA? CSDA is a totally different building for ventilation. There's no ductwork. It's all unit vents. All the unit vents are about 20, 23 years old and they're in good condition. We recommend lighting. We recommend installing a new, this $230,000 project is new controls. Again, I, if, if those, if those units are going to stay here for the next 10 to 15 years, I would do this controls project pretty soon. If you were to say, hey, you know, in a couple of years, we would really like to get all new units, then I wouldn't, you're putting new controls on old equipment. So it's kind of, you almost have to answer the question, how long do you want to do this before you do the controls? The fir-, the first, um, the, the next item is here I focused on the classrooms, because the classrooms are where the unit vents are. The first option is 3A, is putting dehumidification in all the classrooms with air-source heat pumps. So this, the reason I picked this option here and not for there is because there's no, there's duck, there's no ductwork here. So if you want cooling, there's nothing for me to blow the cool air through really, other than to maybe try and retrofit them into these 23-year-old unit vents, which I wouldn't recommend. So option 3A would be putting essentially a mini split in every classroom to provide, um, dehumidification. Number 3B, it would be, and again, I'm just dealing with classrooms here, would be my preferred solution, which would be a ducted system that would replace the unit ventilators altogether, provide the ventilation, the cooling, um, all in one box, uh, or one box per wing. And this, this would match more with the high school has, but it's, you know, a significant cost increase, so. Then we went, we, we jumped down a little further. I have other ventilation areas, so we have a new air handler that would be the library and the offices. That's kind of a high number, because right now this unit is located above the, uh, the school bathrooms and it's very difficult to service. You have to kind of stand on a ladder over a toilet to get at these units. So I wanted to move the- Five and six are the gym and the cafeteria, which are about 350,000 apiece. Number seven would be to install a central propane boiler system at CSDA. It would, under this scenario, the district would own the tanks. We would remove your, your oil tank and install an HVAC control system. That was one of our higher priority items, so we spent the most time on that for this current year. And the estimated savings was 13,000 a year, but we have to, I have to update that. And we would get a $40,000 potential rebate. A solar project, again, I use the same numbers, about 300,000. The interior two classroom, uh, the interior renovation and two classroom addition, was, uh, 2.7 million. And then adding fire sprinkler alarms, it looks like I didn't even put the cafeteria addition on here. But without the cafeteria addition, we're somewhere in the $10 million range and 21, if you had both buildings together. The next slide are projects, if we were to think of bringing anything forward, and this is my list, this is not anyone else's besides, hey, if we were to try and chip away at something this year, what could we do? One of the things I thought about is CSDA's boiler, um, getting off of oil, savings 13,000 in energy plus an additional 2,000 a year in maintenance and a $40,000 rebate might be worthy of consideration. LED lighting at RMMS or CSDA, each of those is around, I guess, 225,000 on average. It'll save 20,000 a year in energy. It'll save, uh, 2,000 to 3,000 a year in maintenance. And both would get potential rebates of, um, 36,000. One of the reasons I thought this was worthy of bringing up, I'm kind of a proponent of before you do solar, are there any big efficiencies you can gain in, in-house?
One of the children is speaking.
Yeah. I thought they had a question about LEDs. The, the, um, I'm kind of a fan of, can, before you do solar, get your, get your usage down? Is there any way to do it? The other thing is because LEDs are becoming more and more the norm, we've been told that rebates are going to be phased out in the next two years. So if we're ever to get any rebates for this work, um, we have to do it in the next two years. And that's not an empty threat, because Vermont has just, it said, no, next year, no more rebates for LEDs. It's too much the standard, so we're not going to, we're not going to pay you. So if you were to wait two more years, you'd lose out on $70,000 in rebate funding, um, if you do the project.
What about the solar? What is the, I mean, I know you can never guarantee, but those, that 30 and 30 and 40? It's been on for a while.
It's been extended for, for, for another like six to eight years.
Oh, okay, all right, good.
Yeah.
At least for, at least for personal. I guess I forgot that you said that that's different for municipalities.
So I have no idea, except, other than I will tell you, when they, they kind of slipped this into that inflation reduction bill, in my opinion.
Yeah.
And it's been extremely popular with school districts. Like we're at, we're being asked, it's so popular that we're adding a full-time solar position, because every time we bring this to a board, they're like, we should probably bring this to the voters lately. And, um, my theory would be it's definitely going to contribute to our federal debt. And it depends on who wins the November election, how long this, this, uh, this program stays away, because it's, it's being way more subscribed than they projected.
And silly question, but, um, you had numbers like 300,000 with a rebate of 120,000. I just want to make sure that it normally would have been 420,000? Or is it really now 180 with the rebate?
No, it's, the rebate is aft, so you, the project total would be 300,000 and, and 100 will come off of it under that scenario. So it'll really cost you 200 or 180.
180.
Yeah.
And then you said about 20K a year, so it's not your payback for that.
Yes.
And that's, is that inclu, is that based off of our current lights and stuff? So it probably would be a little less if we go to LED and things like that, I assume.
I'd have to run those numbers with and without LED. These are kind of, so to, so what we do is, these are reasonable numbers based on our experience, based on our knowledge of the building. If you were to say, hey, we really want to bring one of these projects forward from the list, we try and refine it a little bit between now and when you present it and get a little more details and where the solar panels, because I, these are kind of just like, if you spent 300,000, how much would you roughly save? We didn't even really cite these, so there's some work that would have to be done. What I will say, and I don't, if you were to do a long-term lease with, and did the lighting and the boilers, sorry, the lighting and the solar, it could potentially be budget neutral. Meaning the, if you just said, let's do 400, uh, 500,000 worth of lighting plus 600,000 worth of solar and bundled that together and did it with a 15 to 20-year lease, it could be structured in a way that the energy savings made it budget neutral to the voters, if you wanted to finance it. If you want to finance it for shorter, obviously, uh, because like you mentioned, the lighting is about, without interest, the lighting is about an eight-year payback. The solar is about a nine-year payback. So if you finance it with 15 years, um, roughly, depending on the rate, it's going to have, it's going to be budget neutral. If you finance it with 20 years, it'll be revenue positive, meaning we'll save more than, than the cost of the annual lease payment. But it, it all comes down to how long do you want to lease things for and, um, and then, and your greatest need project was the, maybe the, in my opinion, was the boiler at CSDA. That payback is not as strong. I think I ran that as being somewhere like a 40-year payback. But, um, it is an infrastructure project that, that comes off your $20 million.
It's a cap, a cost avoidance though, right?
Yes.
Because I mean, we're going to, we're going to see this one way or another. So I think that's important as we shape things, that there's savings and there's cost avoidance too.
And one thing too, I will say, like, one of my districts that we've worked with for years is called Chesterfield and they sometimes have surpluses and then they have this kind of list handy. And I have no idea if Brookline gets surpluses, but if you had a $230,000 surplus, that could do, no.
That'd be exciting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, that's-
Municipal rates roughly at right now?
For solar? Oh, oh, lease, lease rates, 5%?
Around 5.
Yes.
The, the other thing I just wanted to make note on, for CSDA, it was, there were two classrooms and that was to get rid of the portables. But it was actually addition of five, a total of, yeah. So I just want to make sure everybody understands it's, it shouldn't say two classrooms, it's actually five.
Five, yeah.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
Thank you, that was really helpful.
Thank you.
That was a lot. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks again for that. Uh, we are going to move over to public input. We'll open up at 6:46. Is there anyone for public input? No? So we're open at 6:46. Okay, uh, we will move over to the principal's report. We'll start there.
Okay, good evening. We've had an excellent start to the school year. And in our principal report, we have our enrollment view and class sizes. And I'm just going to highlight a few events that we've had so far this year. So we started the year off with several assemblies. The first day of school, our unified arts teachers, and with all students at each grade level. And we've done a lot of work this summer with MTSS, multi-tiered systems of supports. And we've shared this at previous meetings where we've had a teacher from a grade and department develop expectations for what are the desired expectations in the classroom and in the lunchroom and the hallway and the bathroom. So our unified arts teachers reviewed those expectations with students on the first day of school. And we continue to do that on a daily basis and we're seeing some really positive results. Um, on Friday of the, the second day of school, we did our annual flagpole ceremony, where we recognized all new staff and new students. And our wings, the blue jay came out to welcome all the students back to school. And another highlight was we had on September 18th, we did an assembly. We reviewed school-wide expectations again for the hallway, the, the lunchroom, classrooms. And we combined that with our Constitution Day assembly. And you'll see some pictures of all these events in our, on our third page of the agenda. And our first picture is a picture of actually Mrs. Oger, kindergarten teacher. We had all the teachers come up and they were the representatives and they kind of ju, they kind of galloped to the stage on a horse stick and signed our school-wide constitution as the delegate for their class that they agreed to our rules and expectations of the school. So we partnered our assembly with Constitution Day, so it worked out really well. And we had a wonderful open house. The Wednesday before that, the 13th of September, we welcomed all the families and students from grades one through three. We had a scavenger hunt in classrooms and families were able to participate in that with their children and also participate in a school-wide scavenger hunt where they had to find the library, the art room, find all of our MTSS posters that we established over there. It was a really positive night, a lot of great feedback from families and staff. And, uh, just one more piece to mention is at the last meeting, we shared our staffing needs and, you know, right now we're in a really good spot. We've made some great progress with, I know there's some concerns about, you know, where we stood with paraprofessionals, but we've made some great hires. And right now we're one short and we've made some great growth there. And I would say we're in our best staffing, um, position, you know, pretty much since COVID, so.
It's impressive. Honestly, I, my eyes lit up when I read this before coming over here for both schools with the number of pairs that you've-
Heavy recruiting, heavy recruiting, lots of phone calls. Signage on the streets, you know, yeah. Visiting people, you know, yeah, same with boards, so.
Thank you for doing all that. I actually spoke to a mother who was recruited. Oh, good, they recruited you. Even for the amount of time she was available, it was perfect.
Tell your friends.
Yeah.
Still recruit. Actually, talking about recruiting, we're still recruiting for substitutes. If anyone is available, let us know, we can work with you. So at CSDA, we've also had a wonderful opening to the school year. We had our fourth grade, uh, visit, tours in, um, in late August, which was nice. And, uh, we had approximately, I'd say about two-thirds of the class showed up with their families between the two sessions. So that was wonderful to see their smiling faces. They were excited and, um, as always, I give them the principal's homework and that was to enjoy the, the rest of their summer. They got a little nervous at first, although you had, you had some students recently. And I love homework and I love math. Can I have some math homework? I said, nope, just, you know, read a book or enjoy the rest of your summer. So that was good. But then we had our scheduled, um, open house and I decided, you know, it was a little early to come back for an open house, so we decided to not have school that day on September 12th. So we had to reschedule for the 18th, uh, which worked out wonderfully. And, uh, there was a, a real show of families at the open house. It was really wonderful. And we demonstrated what a Wolf Den meeting looks like, which is our responsive classroom morning meetings. And so parents got to kind of participate. We just made it a little fun. And they had the activity of hands, head, shoulders, knees and toes. So we got people moving before they got to go meet with their teachers, uh, in the classrooms. So that was very successful. And, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, we've been having our monthly assemblies. We've already had two in the month of September, similar to, as, as Dan was saying at, uh, RMMS. And the big thing is talking to the students and, um, allowing the teachers through the responsive classroom morning meetings, um, as well as the assemblies, but throughout the day, modeling, talking about what our behavior and our expectations are in the building throughout the day. And, but also having those opportunities as well, not just in the morning when students arrive, but the specials, specialists for gym, PE, et cetera, are also integrating the meetings into their classrooms, so that they're really, um, utilizing the ability and chance to have that social, emotional learning and understanding what are the, how are the students feeling, you know, not just at the beginning of the day, but at the end of the day, making sure that we're checking in on them and we're having that, um, adult and child communication and building that trust between the, between the two. So I think that's been very successful. And this Friday at both schools, we'll be having the Plymouth Tiger Group presentation coming, so the students will be looking forward to that as well as the, um, the teachers. And the same thing as far as staffing needs, we are down to, we're still looking for one paraeducator and one custodian and a part-time speech pathologist. So, um, actually I just want to shout out also to Jonathan Verity, our special ed administrator. He's been really working hard to, to hire those paraeducators and supporting the staff as well.
That's great. Awesome, thank you. Um, we are moving over now to a growth management discussion. Um, just for a little background, Colleen and I talked with Michelle Dakota, who is our town planner. Um, I believe, Andy, you've spoken with her as well. Uh, so if you remember last meeting or two meetings ago, we, um, created a, a delegate and, and Colleen is our delegate to the planning board to support moving forward. Um, so kinda kicked that off in earnest. Colleen's gonna give us a little outbrief on what our conversation was about and, um, some of the steps we're gonna take forward here. I think this is going to be an ongoing thing for quite some time and having Mike here was timely. But there's, it's gonna be a give and take, push-pull type thing that we really need to be strategic on.
Yeah, so the first thing I just wanted to make sure of is that I had the school board approval officially to be kind of the liaison to the planning board. I didn't know if we made that official or if there's anything else we need to do to make that official. Um, and so we kept our conversation kind of general, but maybe we take a vote to do that. But really what a lot of the conversation between Ken, Michelle and I was about is the need to be communicating more, um, both ways. On, so we really have to have an understanding of what the planning board is approving in order to plan for the schools. And, um, the role of the liaison would be to bring that information back regularly. But we also wanted to kind of get a sense of where things are now. And so I just first wanna say this was a conversation, you know, by phone, sort of inform a lot of information being generated. So we would like to invite Michelle to our next meeting if possible, so that she can, she has more official information. But, uh, you know, I certainly took notes the whole time. And, um, just as background, Ken was the liaison to, uh, the planning board when I was on a project that the planning board was running, which was basically looking at whether or not we needed to continue growth management in the town of Brookline. So, uh, you know, I know just personally, I moved here in two thousand and nine and everybody was talking about the growth management ordinance and that's how we keep the town small and things manageable. But then kind of seemingly without the public being aware, and nobody's fault, in two thousand and eleven, that growth management ordinance sunsetted. In other words, it wasn't, every year it's supposed to be brought, or if you, if the planning board feels it's needed, it can be brought to, um, a vote before the town to continue it. And it wasn't brought before, is, is my understanding. So there was this period of time historically between two thousand and eleven, and if we're looking at our numbers, I don't know when our, what summer we were talking there, but it was two thousand and twenty-one?
COVID timeframe, so it was somewhere in that range, yeah.
But where the, um, there seemed to be a real rapid increase in housing, which of course impacts the schools. There was a concern about water at the time also. So, um, in two thousand twenty-one, don't quote me, or twenty, the, um, town did agree to another growth management ordinance. And the idea of a growth management ordinance isn't to stop growth, but it's to keep it manageable so that schools don't have, um, an influx of kids that they can't handle, that they're not ready for. It's, and so we need to kind of create a, um, more of a communication, I guess, so that we know what's happening. Because quite frankly, it's really hard to figure out even as a citizen, I think of Brookline, what is going on with all the development? I don't know how you figure it out and I think Michelle can really help us with that. So right now, what, and this is very general, but there are, there are developments called developments for HO, HOPS, which are housing for older persons. That's their name, not my name. Um, and Brookline at some point, my understanding is decided that housing for older persons would be defined as fifty-five or older. Other towns have defined, defined it as age sixty-two or older. So you would think, oh, housing for older persons probably wouldn't be a lot of kids or maybe there would be restrictions. There's absolutely zero restrictions on kids. Um, so that, that's hard to predict. It's very possible that, um, grandmothers, aunts, uncles, some of us who are actually older parents could actually live in these places with kids. So you cannot assume that because it's called housing for older persons, it means it does not come with children. So as of right now, um, my understanding are the three major potential developments before the planning board that involve these housing for older persons. Um, I don't wanna quote exactly the number of units, but just with the two, two of the three that are more kind of further along, we could be looking at forty-five to fifty-five units. The units are all two bedrooms, so that's just sort of, um, there. And we can kind of go back to how do we figure out how many children can be in a unit? And there is a number in Brookline. So that's one piece. So we have two, um, housing for older person developments that are before the planning board, but a little bit further along seemingly. And correct me if you recall this differently, and then a whole nother third development.
Yeah.
We also have, um, and I think many people are aware of us, that there is a potential for, down the road, a, um, much bigger development, which would not be a housing for older persons, but would be a workforce housing, um, development. Um, again, I don't wanna get too specific, but we're looking at units of possibly seventy to ninety. Those, um, generally, the original proposal would have been half being one to two bedrooms and half being three bedrooms. So really, that, this kind of puts us in a position of math that you don't wanna have to do this way. You have to be guessing. So, um, Michelle did let us know that generally speaking, currently, every housing unit in Brookline has half a child. I mean, that's the math. They, so, uh, in looking at those numbers, just for the housing for older persons, if you assumed one child in a two-bedroom unit, that's sixty-five children. If you assumed half a child, it might be more like thirty. Could it be none? Potentially, but, um, we can't assume that. And then obviously, if you get into, um, I don't think there's restrictions and this is where Michelle can help us a little bit more. We had about a thirty-minute conversation planned, it turned into forty-five and then we all had to kind of run because there's so much information here. But, you know, if we were looking at, um, this amount of units in half being one to two bedrooms, so let's just use the number forty, and half being three bedrooms, that's a huge influx of children. So if you're gonna assume one child per one to two bedroom, that's forty students. If you're gonna have two, which is possible, that's eighty. Right there, you have a hundred and twenty, um, if you're using, you know, so there's all this math that you could use. But the bottom line is, we really have to know more from the planning board about what is being approved and how they are managing that in a way that we can keep up with, um, the development. So, I mean, a, a random number that just kind of came up was about two hundred, assuming.
Worst case.
Kind of maybe worst case. But, um, the worst case doesn't include the fact that in a three-bedroom, you can have five kids. So that's, um, that's my current understanding. And I do wanna give the caveat that this was a quick conversation to try to really quickly understand where we're at. The planning board and Michelle really feel the need to understand where we're at and vice versa. So, um, my sort of point is, we need to know what you're thinking about before we can kind of even come back to you to say where we're at. And so that goes back to when we were talking back in, and I, I do wanna say it was the summer of two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah, I think so.
Twenty-one. And we were doing all these improvements and additions to the school. The, we were using the NESDEC numbers and projections based on a reasonable growth. I don't know, and NESDEC is hard because I don't know that NESDEC would predict this sort of number.
It doesn't.
But so we, it doesn't, so we kind of have to do math that way. But, um, these are all potential. We do still have the growth management ordinance in place, but there has to be a process to start to think about this, I think, longer term. How do we meet those needs?
Yeah.
Does that, and you?
Uh, yeah, I'm just gonna add a little color to what you said there, um, thing. So, um, there is one that's known and approved on Main Street. That's one of the HOPS that is a known and approved, um, development that will happen.
Is that the smaller one or the bigger one?
That's the smaller one.
Okay.
There is another one that has an appeal open to it right now, that's in front of the planning board. So that, um, that's still available for public feedback as well. Um, so that is not fully approved yet. So just note those two things. Um, you mentioned NESDEC, so NESDEC's based on housing starts and, and, and known builds. So these would, these aren't, wouldn't be in that, um, yet, which is why it's concerning because it's hidden from a NESDEC growth standpoint. Um, you talked about, we wanted to have Michelle come next month so we can start creating a tighter tie, which I think will be really important. Couple actions that we came out of there with is, um, if we could identify what our available capacity is. And we had done something similar when we did the renovation here of kind of like a build-out projection. So I think that's something we have to just talk about as a team here. Um, another thing that Michelle mentioned was the master plan and capital improvement plans to the town. And I think there's an opportunity to tighten that up as well. Um, uh, one thing that concerns me that I said a couple of times on there and I would be disappointed if I didn't say it out loud here too, is my concern with stuff like this too, is that this puts a lot of burden on the people that live in the town of Brookline if we were to have these significant size units come in. Um, I, I feel strongly that to do something like this, that would change the school, the look of the school overnight or over a couple of years, there should be a heavy burden on, on those developments that come in so that the people living here don't have to shoulder that. And I think that's something we have to, I, I would strongly advocate that we continue to look at as we look at all this. Um, because we did just do a renovation and we're at the potential of being at a build-out already and looking at adding a bunch more classrooms, which you can see the, the pricing structure there.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
Of the master plan? Um, so the, the community survey for the master plan is still open. It'll be open until the thirtieth. Um, so that's where, uh, residents can go in and, um, speak to some of these issues. Um, you know, you can give your, your opinion on housing, land use, services. Um, so if that's what you were alluding to for a master plan, you know, please, um, you know, links are on the website, um, the, the town website. Um, I think people have posted it on Facebook, um, so please, please go and do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, and that was gonna be my last point on my notes here was, how can we continue to provide the transparency here? Cause a lot of this stuff I wasn't aware of until, and only got aware of it because we kind of have physicians that drove us there. To the average citizen, I'm not sure it's, all, all this stuff is easy to find. So we're gonna try to have Colleen go to the, some of those discussions, Michelle will come here. We're open to other feedback on how we can continue to bring this to light so everyone's aware of what's going on too. Because this is gonna impact every, um, every citizen from a, a, a tax burden standpoint for the schools and the services, because if we, if we change dramatically, it will require a response as well from an infrastructure standpoint.
And I just wanna point out one other thing that, um, the, the committee, it was called the Brookline School and Town Services Study Committee, Growth Management Study. And there was, it's probably a fifty-page document that was put together, um, back in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one. But there is a ton of data in that document about why growth management was deemed necessary, the kind of numbers that were already in, increasing without growth management. It's not a fun read, it's not exciting, but it really does kind of give a really good background of the history of all of this. But, you know, some of the data, when I was reading through it again, just from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, um, the school capacity was rapidly being reached because there was no growth management ordinance. And the, it, for a small town, it was a very rapid increase in growth. Um, there was a fourteen point two percent increase from two thousand and seventeen, um, to two thousand and twenty-one. Um, in two thousand twenty to twenty-one, we already added a fourth kindergarten class. And then the next year, we had to add a fifth kindergarten and a fifth first grade. So what we're now seeing are the numbers leveling off a little bit. But without a growth management ordinance, we could see a rapid increase. So that's just, just the facts, just the data, and there's a lot of data in there. Um, going back, I think, to probably ten or fifteen years prior to, uh, the committee doing their work. So I think it's important to revisit as we think about all of the, uh, needs that this would bring into the community. And, and as a side, an aside, growth is necessary. What we're hoping for is reasonable growth that allows us to, um, continue to meet the needs of students in the way we do. You know, with smaller class sizes, um, I think that's why a lot of people moved here, so anyway.
Colleen, a quick question for you.
Yep.
Um, when you shared, thanks for the report, that's very helpful. When you shared that, the smaller HOP, um, development, how many units was that in?
Um, again, I don't wanna be exactly quoted, but I had seventeen. Seventeen.
Okay, I was just trying to think too, I think the other thing that's missing that should be considered. And I know that the Town of Brookline Planning Board is coming to RMS on the twenty-first of October to do a, a meeting here. Some breakout sessions.
Yeah.
From eight-thirty to one-thirty. But I think the other number that people need to realize too in the town is, I'm not sure of the restrictions on that HOPS, if Brookline residents can purchase those units? But if they do, then that's another thirty houses that come on the market. Figure one or two students there, so that's another number on top of.
Yes, exactly.
So there's another.
Yeah.
People are moving out, if they're Brookline resident, if they're fifty-five and older, looking to purchase those things. And now we have more houses.
And then the kids, yeah, then people, most, yeah, again, I don't wanna say most because that's not data-driven, but it seems like a lot of people move here because they want their kids to go to the schools. And this doesn't even begin to cover, and we can't even think about it, it's not our role, but the impact eventually on the middle and the high school and the co-op. Because, um, if we fundamentally, you know, the, the, and I don't think the two hundred is a worst-case scenario, by the way, um, at all, but it's, it's probably not the average. And this is all guesswork, but we're talking about a school district that right now has five hundred and eighty-three kids and a potential increase of two hundred kids. Um, that's, changes everything.
It truly changes, that's, yeah, it changes the look and the feel and it changes. So that's why I said it's a push and pull with Mike, because if we see stuff like that, this stuff is, we shouldn't even bother spending the money on it yet because we're talking about doubling the size of the facilities.
And these, these projections do not include this rapid increase, I assume, right, obviously?
The, and the, the other thing too, when you start talking about growth like this, it's not just the facilities. Because if we want to try to maintain what we've been able to provide for students with small classes, now we're talking staff.
Yep.
Across the board, at all grade levels. I mean, it just, it's that domino effect.
Never mind outside the school, what services, it's not just school services, that's our responsibility, but yeah, absolutely.
Right, but I'm just, I'm just saying, we're, if we're talking about, okay.
Take, take CSDA for example, you got roughly two hundred kids, right?
Right.
So that costs, right, add that on top.
Yeah.
I mean, but, but you're building extra classrooms, that's just, well, why? But what do you get, it's not like you're taking your existing numbers and spreading them out to be more comfortable. Now you need more staff across the board from bus and from transportation to cafeteria workers to custodial staff, not to mention the fact the operating costs, I mean, it just, it becomes an exponential domino effect that I think all of that needs to be taken into consideration. And reiterating to Dan's point, um, back to over the wintertime, I remember speaking to three different Brookline couples who stay here because they raised their families here and were excited about the fifty-five plus because they don't want to leave Brookline. But they were excited about being able to move to a small unit, then their home opens up.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so now instead of a half a child in one of those units, you might be talking about a family of, with four kids, which blows those numbers.
Yeah.
Right out of the water and it makes it almost nearly impossible to plan for that type of, of growth within our schools and, and being able to do it properly.
Right.
Right?
Right, so the, I mean, we're going to grow as a town.
Yeah.
And we need to recognize that's going to happen. It's just, how do we do it in a sustainable way that everyone can support it? And that's why Michelle mentioned it to us, that the appeal was still, I, I think it's worth noting, there is a, there's another.
Is band-aiding it from year to year, I don't think is going to be the most cost-effective way to, to do it. But that is a burden on, on our community and our, and the taxpayers.
Yeah, I mean, I would really, I would really advocate for people, I know, I, I hear a lot from parents. I hear that everyone is very booked and very busy and I hear that, right? We're, we're a society where everyone is booked and busy, but, you know, the select board meets every other Monday, planning board meets once, once a month. You know, it, some of the meetings are recorded or you can email Michelle, you can email the planning board, you can email the select board. Please make your voice known, please get involved, please run for these positions, please know what.
what's going on in town, you know? A lot of these things that come up that are, that are seemingly kind of coming maybe out of left field, they've been, you know, they've been discussed, they've, they've been on the books, and, and I know it's, it's hard and it's surprising, but we do, as people that live here, we, we really do need to, to know what is going on. I mean, it's, it is incumbent upon us to know what is going on, because as people that will be here for the next 10, 20 years, you know, it, it is our, it is our job. You know, I'm happy to answer any questions people have about the master plan committee and about the community survey. We will be here on the 21st, we're holding a Zoom session on the 24th for those people that can't make it here on that Saturday. We'll be at the duck race on Saturday handing out cards so that you can still fill out the survey. You know, I don't mean this for, to be any kind of lecture, but, you know, I really just hope that people that are of this age group, like, really, really do want to get involved, so, thanks.
Thanks. And, and certainly, you know, we're taking a step, so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
I don't know that we have to form it, we can do that, normally we just vote on a couple of positions and everyone else is selected.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So I think you're good.
Okay, good, yeah.
And I guess, but if you want us to, I'm happy to put it to vote right now.
No, if you're all fine.
All in favor of Colleen?
Yeah.
That's universal. Great. Andy or Jean or anyone, does anyone else have, did you have any feedback on this topic too from your conversation, or did we cover it for tonight, do you think?
I, I think you've covered it, I think the big thing is, I'm really excited to have Michelle come here and talk to us and have that dialogue, because I think that dialogue is something that hasn't existed in the past, and to Tracy's point, this is a long-term issue, so I think starting that dialogue and getting those pieces in place are going to prove critical in the next five to 10 years.
Yep. All right, great, thanks. Okay, so voting in schools.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you an update, there's been no date set yet for the presidential primary. Right now, I am meaning to probably having no school on that day, between the turnout that we expect for those, I think that will be the best piece. Still working with the town for a long-term solution on elections, but that's something that we're typically done, and as soon as I have that date set, we'd be able to notify parents. I know the Secretary of State is waiting for the last possible date to declare that, trying to figure out what's happening with other states, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. Next, I had the.
Can I, just real quick, I'm going to close public input at 7:16, so that's in the 30 minutes, go ahead, sorry.
No problem. I just wanted to go back to, last month I had gone through round one of the budget, and it was in your board packet again, and I just kind of wanted to give you some, my thought process, just so you understand what we're looking at. I'm not touching anything under academics at this time. I am in discussions with the lunch recess assistance, because we need to do something, because right now, we're using a lot of our administrative time to cover lunches and recesses, and I don't know if that's the most efficient uses of our dollars, so Dan and Trish and I are working on that. In terms of the, you'll see there's a writing and reading teacher at CSDA. Right now, I'm going to just change that to simply a teacher, because I don't know where growth is going, so I'd like to build in a teacher at this point, so that way, either Dan's numbers or Trish's numbers go up, we'll at least plan for that. We are still discussing the librarian and the secretaries. I will be having a discussion next week with Hollis regarding NTSS social worker, because I'd like to see that position shared between the two districts. I'm not making any recommendations at this point around computer replacement or new computers. I did want to just touch under safety and compliance. You'll see under CSDA that we had allocated $25,000 for playground safety upgrades. Please understand that'd be combined with the $50,000 donation, so, and obviously, if for some reason that playground got cut, we'd work with Tricia to use the PTA's donation to start those upgrades this coming spring, is our plan.
I'm just going to be on record saying I strongly think we should do that to support that donation.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Also, under safety and compliance, you'll see there we have a radio systems allocated to both schools. That most likely will come out, that's something that we'd like to see long-term, but we have applied for two grants, we haven't been successful yet, but we'd like to take a couple more shots at that, because we also have the support of the both communities' management, emergency management teams, so that may help us to secure a grant, but we like to put it in the budget so people are aware that it's there. From our discussions with Mike today and everything that's going on, we're just looking at potentially delaying the bathrooms at RMS, just trying to figure out what's the right timing with all the different projects that we have. And then, what we'll probably do is also look at some of the things that we have in our maintenance expendable trust, and we may need to prioritize things that are in the actual budget and move them to the trust so that they can get a greater priority level for next year. But by October, we expect to have round two, and moving forward, we'll also have further discussions in October about Mike's discussion tonight, and kind of where everything starts to fit in, because it's almost like two separate discussions. One to me is infrastructure, boilers and all those pieces. Another is, Tricia has two portables that are 20-plus years old, that are, you know, basically at the end of their useful life, and probably will have a need to, just to get the five classrooms at every grade level for three more classrooms over that time. So, a lot of different things going on that we'll be coming back with in October when we do round two. Any questions or comments or thoughts that you'd like to provide me?
I guess, Allison, I'm just wondering if you've been able to meet with Brookline Finance Committee?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm going to turn it over to Gina for policy.
Buckle up.
I want to get things here, very active policy, wait, all right, so if you wouldn't mind just starting with a motion for a second reading on JICK.
Okay, sorry, I got there. All right, I'm going to make a motion to accept the second reading of policy JICK, People's Safety and Violence Prevention Bullying. Need a second for that? Second, thank you, Allison, okay, so that's on the floor now for conversation.
Great, so JICK, as you see, long policy, this is our bullying policy. We did make a very slight adjustment in first reading, based on the minutes from the last meeting, we made no changes and are bringing it back for second reading with no changes.
Can I, can I just ask a question? So, we refer to, and it might be nitpicky, and I apologize, but I know that this might be helpful, hopefully. We refer to the principal throughout this document, but then we also refer to the principal or designee. Do we want to make that consistent? For example, do we want that only, it really, in Roman numeral seven, it says, "At each school, the principal shall be responsible for receiving complaints of alleged violations of this policy," but later in the policy, you know, the designee can complete the forms.
Sure, so on page one, very bottom, that's right before section two, "Any reference in this policy to superintendent or principal shall include their designee."
Okay, where is that again?
On page one, right above section two.
Right above section two?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so then we don't need the designee language then in there, because it's already assumed?
Correct.
Okay, so maybe that might be just, I mean, that's just, as long as that's, that kind of covers that piece. We could take some of it out, but it doesn't matter if it's repetitive. And then the only other question I had, and I do like the multiple readings because you see different things, so, the superintendent, section 10, "The superintendent may, within a 48-hour time period, grant the principal a waiver from the requirement that the parents of the alleged victim and the alleged perpetrator be notified of the filing of a report, and only if it's deemed to be in the best interest of the victim or perpetrator." I guess I'm just curious, doesn't really sit well, and what would be a situation that's taken directly from the statute?
It hasn't happened since I've been here.
Okay.
I think the biggest thing would be if you were concerned about a violent household.
Okay.
And you were afraid of abuse at home.
Okay, I see.
So I think that would be the biggest concern if you thought for the children, either victim or perpetrator, would go home and be unsafe.
Would harm, okay, all right, that makes sense, and, and it sounds like we don't really use that, that that's statutory. It's a very unusual, okay. That was the only question I think I had on this one. Yeah, thank you.
Anything else at all? So this will go one more reading then, and then our next, our next board meeting, it would become official. Good for now? All right, put it to a vote then? All those in favor? Four zero. Great, thanks. Okay, next one.
Go ahead.
"Make a motion to amend policy EB safety program in its entirety by replacing it with the copy provided with the agenda and accept the first reading of policy EB Workplace Safety Program and Joint Loss Management Committee." So I need a second for that.
I'll second that.
Thank you, okay.
All right, as you can see, this is quite a switchover. It is required by law, and it legally just sort of shifted gears a little bit, and so now we're just describing the Joint Loss Management Committee, which we have, a very strong committee, it's been up and running. This does not change our day-to-day business, it just solidifies it in a required-by-law policy.
Okay. These aren't, none of these are the first reading adopts yet, that's all I just wanted to verify.
Right, this will, we can go for three reads.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Mm-mm.
All right, all those in favor then? Four zero, thanks. All right, the next one is EHB. So I'll make a motion to accept the first reading of policy EHB Data Records Retention as Presented. Second by?
Second.
All right, thank you, Allison. Trying to find it too.
EHBR. I think it's, it was right after the joint, do you want mine?
Thank you.
Here.
No, okay, so, EHB Data Records Retention, we had a very simple policy, the superintendent shall develop procedures for our records retention system, and we're going to make it a little bit more specific. So we've always followed this, we had an audit in the co-op and a federal grants audit, and one thing that they had requested was a copy of our policy. The, the feedback was that we should adopt a more specific policy, so this is the policy we adopted in the co-op, it's going through various readings in Hollis, and so now it's coming before Brookline, so that the next time we have a federal audit in Brookline, we are ready to go for their expectations.
So I don't think this is, I think we might have the schedule that was attached to the policy and not the, but it sounds like the policy is one sentence, so. I love the schedule, this is amazing.
So the policy is two pages?
Yes, it's on the board, the.
Oh, it's on that?
The copy online is more.
Okay.
Robust than the sentence.
Right, yeah, it's all, underlined, it's all brand-new language, it's a page and a half with some additional legalism.
Maybe I just didn't print it.
Yeah, it's not in the board packet, that's why.
I might have skipped it, okay.
That's why. So, I'm good approving it, but I got to read it now, because I didn't realize, I didn't realize I missed it.
Is it a, is it a proven, is it?
It's just a first read tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But, thanks for the background. Are there any questions at all with that? We're good for now? Okay, all those in favor then? Four zero, great. Okay. We're on AC now, correct?
EHBR.
EHBR, okay, thanks. Okay, EHBR Local Records Retention Schedule, so this, I'll take a motion, make a motion to accept the first reading of EHBR Local Records Retention Schedule.
I can second that.
Thank you, all right, that's on the floor.
Okay, so this isn't in my packet, so I'm wondering if a packet went out and then we added attachments, I'm not really sure, because they are available online. This is, I'm going to avoid the schedule. We always have it in place.
Okay.
We typically, we don't have to bring the dash Rs forward to the board, but we just figured it would make sense, since we're bringing EHB, which references the schedule, that you also see the schedule, which also identifies why we have more space in the SAV office for all the records and everything that we have to rely on to, which is why our attic is not doing so well with all the storage out there. But a lot of records are permanent storage or 50 years after the termination of employment, and anyway, all of this is, is all legal and it's what we do, so.
It's just, I don't know, maybe it's not a question for right now, but would, would it be a, would it be a DOE thing or a state thing to ever think about, like, technology and like moving things to the cloud, or that's?
Yeah, so we are, our office manager does that, and he's been scanning, it's quite interesting to see, you know, hiring records of someone from 1902.
Oh.
And to see the salary, and I wouldn't work for that salary.
Seven cents a week.
But it is, we're actually, it's one folder at a time, it's very time-consuming, and so it's just a long-term project.
Interesting.
I just want to stop by.
And totally, because I remember, I remember asking this, and, and we couldn't do interns too, because I think it was something to do with who could see documents, do you right? Because I remember thinking, I was like, well, let's just get a bunch of interns and start scanning.
Oh, no, I didn't know if like, if the state would allow you to do that sort of thing, I thought it had to be all paper, all like, in like cold storage somewhere, but, no, that's, no, thank you for.
We're graduating there.
No, thank you for.
They're my groupies.
It's too bad, because like, our kids need service hours to graduate, like, it'd be a perfect.
Plenty of other opportunities for them to.
Oh, I know. Just adds to the list, unfortunately.
All right, we need to put that one to a vote. All those in favor? That's a first read as well, thank you, four zero.
Thank you.
Okay, so this next one is where it changes, this is AC, so I'll make a motion to accept the first reading, waive subsequent readings, and adopt AC Non-Discrimination Equal Opportunity Employment and District Anti-Discrimination Plan as presented. So I need a second. Someone?
I can second. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So that's on the floor.
Okay, thank you. All right, so AC, we saw recently, it came forward, we adopted it November 30th, 2022. What we're doing here tonight is removing section F, which references all of the timelines. The timelines are not current with, with law, and so we're going to add those timelines and all the specifics in the policies that will come to you further on in the agenda. So it's really the same language, but we're going to put more specific information later on.
Okay.
Can I just?
This is also, I'm sorry, Colleen, requested by our attorney.
Just, this looks good, there was a little typo above E, the last paragraph, no listen once every two years, off years from the review of the district Suicide Prevention Plan just needs a, but then, I wondered if maybe this was just typos, the way it was set up, that there's Human Rights Officer twice, Director of Student Services for students, Director of Student Services and Director, I don't know, that's all like just the way you legally need to say it.
Sure, it's a good question. So thank you, I did, when I was reviewing this for the Hollis, I did notice that the Brookline one was missing that parentheses, so thank you for reminding me of that. So the Human Rights Officer for Students is a Director of Student Services, the Human Rights Officer for Employees is the HR.
Gotcha.
So, so it reads funky, but it's intended to be depending on who is seeking that individual, it could be a different person. I, you know, another option would be the Hollis Board in their, or their policy committee opted to keep the first paragraph of section F, because it has nothing to do with the timeline, it identifies that, it tells people to go to the Human Rights Officer, but it doesn't give a timeline if they feel that they have been discriminated against, harassed or bullied. So if you would like, you can discuss now to maintain that first paragraph of section F that is currently structural. It's just the entire timeline that we needed to get rid of.
I like, I like that clarification personally.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I think it doesn't hurt, right? Yeah.
So you can adopt it as.
Yeah.
Do you want me to withdraw, do you want me to withdraw in verbos?
No, I, I think you can agree that that was the adjustment.
Great, yeah, that and the parentheses, yeah, great.
Any other discussion on that? Because this isn't adopted.
That one's good.
The, if you're going to keep that first paragraph though, you need to amend the last sentence, because it's, it references. last sentence, because it's, it references the timelines that are gonna be below in that heading. So just, if we're gonna keep F in that first paragraph, you just need to edit that last sentence.
Or otherwise-
Oh, yeah, or otherwise as provided in the policies. If that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor? Four zero. So, thanks. All right. Our next one is ACAAR.
Is EAA.
Did I just skip one? Okay, I'm gonna head, sorry. Okay. So I'll make a motion to accept the first reading, waive subsequent readings, and adopt policy ACAA, harassment and sexual harassment of students.
I can second that.
Thank you.
Okay. So as the title suggests, harassment and sexual harassment of students. We did have a policy prior that looked at sexual harassment of students. You're gonna see later on that we are requesting to rescind it. It was JBAA. This one is straight from our, from council, and we've been asked to put this into place. This is, this is more current. We're also elevating it by putting it in section A, so it's not hidden with all the other student policies. Section A is more like foundational beliefs of the school district. So like I said, it elevates it and it puts it closer to AC.
Looks good. This is all language you have to use from the title. Yeah, okay.
I'm good. I just give it a pause in case anyone has any other thoughts.
Well, it's good.
Tracy, you're good? Allison? Okay. That's it. Okay, all those in favor then? Four zero. Thanks. Okay. So now we're at ACAAR. So I will make a motion to accept the first reading, waive subsequent readings, and adopt ACAAR, Student Discrimination, Harassment, and Title IX Sexual Harassment Complaint Procedures.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. So, this is just coordinated with ACAA. It's the regulations. It's the timeline. I agree we share with you that our leadership retreat this year in August was a three-day retreat with our district council, and the focus was on Title IX harassment and bullying, and all the legal aspects of that. We followed up with continued training for our leadership team at our month, or our twice-a-month meetings, with follow-up conversations. We're gonna have a workshop next meeting, and an additional support with our attorney. As I mentioned earlier, we typically don't bring the regulations forward, but partially because it's a first and a dot, and partially because of the matter with sexual discrimination and harassment, Title IX, we felt it made most sense to be most transparent. And this is word for word from, from the law. It just identifies this very specific detailed timeline, and identifies why these investigations would take 60 days to complete. And we don't have to stray from that.
I, I know this is taken from the law, but there's just a couple of typos that, I don't know if we just keep it because it's in the law, but like, there's the word alleged rather than allegedly under section 2A. I can just kind of, if it's okay with the board, just give, I don't think we need to-
2A, where is it?
Okay, so like, under 2A, number three, the second line, who alleged, allegedly it should be engaged. And then in number four, I mean, it's not as big a one, I mean, that's too picky. Never mind. I mean, as long as, I think it's just-
Or needs, subject to exception.
Yeah, needs.
Yep.
Yeah. And then in the A, the definitions, there's actually a definition, discrimination or harassment. And I know, and it's not your fault the law is written this way. And then the description of discrimination and harassment, but, but the typo is discrimination or harassment is prohibited. Somebody might have thought status, it's not "are" prohibited. I don't think, I don't know. It might be, if it's-
It's the second to last word in that definition.
In number one, A1, 1A1?
Yeah, the, A1, so discrimination or harassment, the statuses are prohibited, the, the ending of that.
It's is prohibited.
It should be statuses prohibited.
Yeah.
It's picky, but-
I know, I feel ridiculous.
No, but it's-
But when you read these, it just looks fun.
Right.
And then-
It's good. I read for intent, you're reading for the detail. That's good.
Yeah. And then in C, let's see, section 2C, just really slight, just fixing it, because it says "and," and then there's not another "and" after the B. I, just like a little-
Section C.
C2A, so it says, there must have been something added, I think. The third one must have been added. So you take out the first "and," and then put it under B, semicolon, "and."
This one I'm unsure. I, I think it might be-
The way it's supposed to-
And B.
And B, oh, okay.
That could change the meaning.
Yeah. If it is, then don't quote me on that. And then under section three, it's just another "is our" thing. Like, section 3A1, "School employees who have reason to believe that a student has been subjected to sexual harassment is, it should be "are" required." And in B, and I know it's the law, but B3, it's just amazing. It's, "Must dismiss a formal complaint if the conduct doesn't constitute sexual harassment." I get that. "The conduct allegedly did not occur within the scope of the school district's education programs, activities," which makes sense, "or did not occur in the United States." I guess that's just the way the law is written, right? Okay, all right. I just want to make sure.
Allison, they're on that trip.
This is, and this is federal, this is federal law, so I would suspect it probably covers like, military bases out of country.
Oh, that makes sense, okay. But it's so specific, and then it goes the United States.
That would be my, that would be my guess for that.
But other than that, I know it's all taken from the law, so it looks good.
If you just, sorry, just one thing. There's two, if you go on the, up at the top, the third paragraph, there's two "ors." Has occurred, and or, oh, sorry, no, maybe that's supposed to be two "ors." And or, or, sorry. Yeah.
Reading this really challenges your focus. It's so wordy. Oh my God. I don't know how you do this.
Sorry, I'm a legal scholar.
Thank you.
Sorry. I just ran away.
You too good?
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor then? Four zero. Great. Okay, we're getting there. The next one, "I'll make a motion to accept the first reading, waive subsequent readings, and adopt policy ACAB, harassment and sexual harassment of school employees."
I'll second that.
Oh, wait, did I just do that one? No.
No, I know, they're all-
It's very similar, okay. Yeah, sorry.
For employees. So I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I was just looking. So this is really similar to ACAA, only it is for school employees. So this, we'll see, we will be requesting to rescind GBAA. So this is more updated. The company regulations are updated with the legal timelines for today, and it elevates it from the G section, which is all employees, to A section. Very similar to what we just approved.
Great. Okay. All those in favor? Four zero. Okay. So now we're ACABR. So I'll make a motion to accept the- Thank you.
Who, I'm sorry, you seconded?
I did.
Okay.
Colleen. So this looks very familiar, just like-
Yep, very similar to ACAR, just, there's a B.
Okay. Any questions on this one?
I don't.
All in favor then? Four zero. Okay. Next is to make a motion to rescind policy GBAA, Sexual Harassment and Sexual Violence. Thank you. Okay. Colleen just beat you.
Yeah.
Okay. Other than that, now that we have ACAB, this policy's no longer needed, and it's outdated.
Okay.
Yep. Makes sense.
All right. All those in favor? Four zero. And I will make a motion to rescind policy JBAA, Sexual Harassment Students.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
We just adopted ACAA, which is more updated and better serving than GBAA.
Great. All those in favor? Four zero.
I think that was a record.
That was, that was a lot of work. So thanks to the policy committee with all that. That's a lot of work. It's great. I mean, policy is the foundation. This is great to get all this updated and where it is. So thanks all for that.
Yeah, that's a lot of work.
Okay. With that, we need a non-public this evening. So I'm just gonna make sure I say the right one. We are going to, I'm gonna make a motion with the board by roll call, go into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91A32A, the dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee. This is a roll call vote. So Allison, yeah, yeah, thank you. Colleen seconds, thank you.
I second.
Allison, you wanna start us off down there?
Yes.
Allison, I.
Allison, I.
Tracy, I.
Colleen, I.
And Ken, I. So we're going to non-public at nine, or 7:45.